I'd like to call this meeting to order. Do I have a motion to convene into executive session? Because we're going to open it's.
Motion to convene to executive session. Do we need a second first or start reading?
You're making the motion so you have to read it.
Approval of executive sessions for minutes of August 13th, 2025. Superintendent's evaluation performance goals pursuant to Rhode Island general laws. Forty-two, forty-six, five, A, one. Job performance of an individual. Matter pursuant to Rhode Island general laws, forty-two, forty-six, five, A, four. Investigative proceedings. Approval of executives minutes of October 7th, 2025. Update of STA negotiations pursuant to Rhode Island general laws. Forty-two, forty-six, five, A, collective bargaining. Annual school safety plans pursuant to Rhode Island general laws. Forty-two, forty-six, five, A, three. Deployment of security personnel or devices. And Rhode Island general law sixteen, twenty-one, twenty-five. Annual review of school safety plans. Approval of executive set minutes. October 15th, 2025. Pursuant to Rhode Island general laws. Forty-two, forty-six, five, A, one. Job performance of three individuals to discuss. The appointment of an acting principal. Sorry, acting superintendent of schools. Review and approve matters which relate to the privacy of students and their records. Pursuant to Rhode Island general laws. Forty-two, forty-six, five, A, eight. Homeschool request. Collective bargaining with the situation education support personnel. Near pursuing. That's how you say it. Pursuant to Rhode Island general laws. Forty-two, forty-six, five, A, two. Collective bargaining. Update on the STA negotiations pursuant to Rhode Island general laws. Forty-two, forty-six, five, A, two. Collective bargaining. Why do I repeat the same thing? Potential litigation Rhode Island general laws. Forty-two, forty-six, five, A, two, two. And litigation pursuant to Rhode Island general laws. Forty-two, forty-six, five, A, two. Warwick Public Schools versus Barrington Public Schools. ET before the Commissioner of Education.
Seven motion. Do I have a second? In discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to call this meeting to order and the first line of business is Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we also approved the homeschool requests at the vote of four to zero. Next, we have the consent agenda. John, I have a question for you, a procedural question. The special session minutes for 10:15, I want to add information to that. Should I pull that out of the consent agenda? Okay, so I have a motion to pull the special session minutes of 10:15 out of the consent agenda. Do you have a second? All in favor? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda to exclude minutes from 10:07:25. Bills, general fund bills, 10:01 to 10:30 in the amount of $653,836.15. Grant fund bills for the month of October in the amount of $134,062.15. And nutrition fund bills for the month of October in the amount of $56,193.65.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Before we go to the motion, John, do I add what I want to add to the minutes so I don't have to make an amended motion?
Let me say this, that under state law, any member of the school committee can ask to have something added to the minutes. The position I advise school committees is that if somebody wants to add something, they have a right to add. It needs to indicate though, unless the school committee agrees that it was added at the request of a particular member.
What was that last part? So I'm gonna add-
If everybody is comfortable adding it, it just gets added. On the other hand, and I have this issue in another district last month where the majority of the committee said, "That's not how it happened."
Oh, I see.
But I said that the person who said, "I want it in," has a right under the Open Meetings Act to put it in, but it has to be labeled "added at the request of-"
A specific person.
Ms. Hopkins.
Do I add it before we make a motion so we don't have to do an amended motion?
Correct.
So under discussion for the October 15th meeting, the special meeting, I wanted to add the following. Note that all individuals discussed in executive session were given prior notice and given an opportunity to have that discussion in open session and no requests were made. That statement was made at that meeting, but didn't make it into the minutes. So I would like to add that to the minutes with approval from everybody.
I was not at the meeting, but if that statement was made, it's important to add.
Correct. Our, the attorney, Ben Scangio, had us add that statement, if we recall that, at that meeting. So do I need approval? Do we have to vote on that to add it? Alright, so I would, do I have a motion to approve the October 15th, 2025 minutes to include the statement that I just read?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, now that we got all of that out of the way. I'm really excited to have the wrestling team here and I'm going to hand it over to Ozzy Nobalucci, who's standing in for Lori Andrews for today.
This is very fancy. Is it working? Is it?
Yes.
Alright. So we are incredibly proud to recognize the outstanding achievements of our Situate Wrestling Program from last season. Accomplishments that represent dedication, resilience, and remarkable growth in a sport that continues to gain momentum here in our community. Our student athletes demonstrated tremendous commitment and competitive excellence, earning multiple individual state titles across boys, girls, and middle school levels, as well as securing the girls' wrestling team's second consecutive state championships. These achievements reflect not only the hard work of our students, but also the strength of our program and the support of our families and coaches. At this time, I'd like to invite Coach Dumont to share more about these accomplishments and announce our champions by name. And I wanted to say after that, please help yourself to a donut over there. Compliments of R.I. Donut Guy. So, thank you.
I'd like to see our athletes as well. It's gonna come up? I get a little excited.
They will come up. So first, I'd like to recognize middle school state champion Trace Dumont. Trace is the third middle school state champion in four years for Situate from middle school.
Don't sit down. You're gonna have to stay.
So we're gonna honor some of the girls who are here today. Unfortunately, some of them have moved on to different schools as well as could not make it tonight. So, but we do have two of them here. Faith Dumont was part of the state champion as well as second place in the state last year in the female division. Next, we will honor Jolene Cole, who was the freshman state champion as well as as well as part of the state winning championship last year as well. Faith was part of the team that won it both years. So last year, we had two freshmen win the freshman state championships for the varsity level. Aiden Grover, who also was one of the ones who won it as an eighth grader as well. So continued success in high school. Hopefully this year he does it again in a higher level. Hopefully. And then we also had Scott Cole win the freshman state championships as well. So for anyone who doesn't know, our wrestling program here at Situate should have about, for high school, about 40 kids. 35 to 40 kids. I believe it's our only D1 program. And it's growing. And this is why kids like this, putting in the hard work and dedication.
I have a couple of comments myself.
So I have a question. I have been an athlete, high school, college, and I continue to compete right now. And I compete in tennis. And at my age, I still get really, really nervous before my matches. And I know that if I don't stay focused, I'm gonna lose. So I still to this day challenge, I have a challenge of not having self-doubt before I hit the courts. And I have to work really hard at talking myself to be calm and to stay focused. My question is, what do you do before your matches? Right before you, and once I start playing, I'm better, but it's always that moment before I step on the court and start playing that I am just struggling to keep myself together. What do you do before you start your match?
Listen to music. I also listen to music.
What do you say? What do you say? What do you say to yourself while you're listening to music? Are you making sure that you are? Like, what are you telling yourself? Like, "I'm gonna win. I know what I'm gonna do"?
I think it's just the mindset.
What is your mindset?
That, like, if, like, you can, like, I'm sorry.
No, you're good. I mean, you guys are incredible athletes. You're champions. What do you say before you go on?
I go in there, I think it's like anyone's match. And I also listen to music before and like, know that it's anyone's match.
Also, like, picture what moves you're gonna do and like, yeah.
You have a plan. You got a plan. Thank you.
I go live to get the jitters out. And I don't really, I didn't listen to music last week.
Thank you.
So the other thing you guys didn't mention that I've seen you all do is you are an amazing team. And I've seen people wrestle for the first time and for the 400th time. And every wrestler is on the side of the mat, watching other people match. You've got this. You've done this. So it's kind of amazing to see you guys go out there. And it's a team sport, but you're out there individually and you guys have held it together in ways that are, it's just, it's astounding. So for those of you who don't know, we have not had a wrestling program at Situate for a long time. So maybe five, six, okay, six, six? So six years ago, a guy by the name of Serge Boyceu, you guys may or may not have heard him in the wrestling world, Mike Hassel, Sal Gil-Samino, God rest his soul, Dan Casey, said, "Hey, we really need a program at Situate", and we started it. Anyone who knows anything about wrestling knows that Boyceu name is pretty pretty pronounced in the community. So there was a wrestler that we had here by the name of Gabe Boyceu, who was above and beyond, but he's been wrestling since he was in diapers. His father owns a dojo. He says he's that. So we started the program and Gabe, for the most part, was, that first year was kind of the only one doing it. So to see how far this program has come in such a short period of time is amazing. Gabe's long gone, right? Like, and God love Gabe, that he's done a fabulous job. But to see you guys continue to compete at the level that you compete, and there were some naysayers. Some people would say, "Oh, once Gabe's gone, Serge is gone." Guys, is Serge gone? It's amazing. It's amazing to see we've brought some, we've had some wonderful homegrown athletes. We've brought some phenomenal kids in from other districts for our academic programs. And here you are, but you guys are rocking it. So big shout out, love the boys. Shout out to the girls too, for a very small, for one of the smallest districts in the state. I know we did at one point have the, is it one or two? Size-wise, right, acquired?
Last year, North Providence may have outnumbered us by one, but we still won for points. So we've won, there's only been two girls' tournaments and we've won both.
Congratulations. And big shout out to the Dumonts without you guys. And I know there's one that's not, you have- Drake, sorry, so Colton. So congratulations to you guys. We'd love having you here and keep doing what you're doing. You ready for the season? Yeah. Did Serge say you could have a donut? No weigh-in soon anyway, right?
You usually tell them they don't have to stay.
Oh, yeah, of course. So there's donuts over here. Even better, we'll move them to the back after I make a nice selection. No, I'm just kidding. Look at the police are looking at me now like I'm gonna take the donuts. No, no, no. And you guys, thank you guys. Thank you guys for being here, but you absolutely, as much as you want to hear me talk a lot tonight, you guys do not, I don't know you, but I know your older brother. And if you give me stuff, I'll give him a call. You're free to go. Congratulations, guys. Thanks for coming. Yes, yes, yes.
It's so weird because the light's not on there.
Maybe you have to turn it on or off there.
I know. You can't tell when it's on or off, like these-
You can hear by- Alright, so that brings us to the public comment section of the meeting. While we have our wrestling team celebrating in the back with their donuts. Do I have anybody in the room for us that would like to come up for public comment?
Matthew Allen, 159 Hope Furnace Road. I noticed on the agenda that Northwest is not on it.
Correct.
I know you guys said you were in a table at till this month. Obviously, people have not returned yet. Is it going to be tabled? Is this-
It has to be on the agenda for next month because we have to make a decision by the 31st of December.
So no matter what, it will be on?
So can I, and I don't know because we spoke after the last meeting too, and I know there's a lot of moving parts right now. And I don't want to put you on the spot, Ozzy. Is there anything that you can offer to this, just about where we are? So I think, Matt, if you don't mind me saying, and I think, and I received some other calls as well, parents who have children with special education needs saw that on the agenda and is like, oh my, you're right, like, so, and then we're like, oh, we're just gonna table it, right? So I think, and we can't give you an answer now, but I think we owe it to the parents to give them as much information as we can, if that makes sense.
Hi, Matt.
Hi.
So I can tell you this much. For the last three weeks, I have been very much in conversation with Mr. Wilson and Ms. Santos. I can also tell you that Foster actually just voted to, you know, separate from, okay, me too. And, you know, they got, they were separated from Northwest. As of today, I have reports of a financial impact of them separating from the collaborative is gonna have on us. How much is it gonna increase? The other thing we're also working on is the services that they do provide to us and the cost that it would be to our district if we were a standalone. Because in no way we can or will or are planning to remove, reduce, we're gonna do what the law is requiring us to do. So I just want to be able to present numbers so based on factual events, we can, this committee can make a decision.
Frank question because I, we had quite a lengthy conversation. And I think part of, and I don't know if you can answer this or not, and if you can't, that's fine. Where is this coming from? And as far as the collaborative includes Foster, Gloucester, separate, Pontagansett, and Situate. Right? So just to make sure that we're all on. And as of this moment in time, it is Foster that has voted to separate. They do not want to be, is this what started the process? Is there anything you can? And if you can't, that's okay. I just, I think, I'm trying to put myself in your shoes, Matt, or anybody's shoes, and being like, okay, I know these people, I know, and I know we have some of our own teachers, but there are people that are shared through the collaborative. Why is this happening? I love what's happening with my kids right now. Why are we changing this? And if you can't answer that, that's fine, but we need to get parents those answers. John is-
This is not on the agenda, so I will be very brief. And the issue is that Situate for years was the financial agent. And Situate interpreted that, that we were the bookkeeper for the collaborative. Because one district has to be the bookkeeper. Over time, it came, Situate came to the conclusion, particularly the former finance director, that we were doing all the work and not being compensated by any of the other three districts. We asked, we said, and I believe it came before this committee, that we were not going to continue as the fiscal agent this year. The fiscal agency, therefore Foster-Gloster said, "They will do it." It has been a very difficult and unpleasant-
Say Foster-Gloster, that's Pontagansett we're talking, because-
That is correct. It's Pontagansett. Said they would do it. And it has been a very difficult and unpleasant transition. It has been unfair to employees. It has been unfair to the Situate as a district. Nobody is talking about changing as the superintendent indicated. The law dictates the services that need to be provided. And nobody is talking about changing the services. But on the other hand, this committee needs to consider how much it will cost to pay for the expansion of the business office in Foster-Gloster. Because as I understand it, that's what's going on. So it's not about services, it's about the business office. And I think that you need to listen carefully in terms of what the contract is a year-to-year. With Foster leaving, you will now be outvoted two to one on everything. And you need to think very carefully in terms of what protections you have in place so that you're not subsidizing Foster-Gloster. I'm not saying that leaving is the good thing or a bad thing. Frankly, I don't have any more information with regard to that. On the other hand, there are concerns that you need to talk about. And the acting superintendent, it's not fair to her that this being on the agenda today because she doesn't have the information either. You know, what would it look like? As a result, we can't answer the questions that people are asking. And it is correct that if you are gonna withdraw, you have to do it by December 31st. It would then be effective on July 1st. And that needs to be on your December agenda. One way, you know, one way or the other, where you're going. But it's not fair to the assistant superintendent to have a discussion about this today.
But I also think, and I 1,000% agree, but I also think it's like this big thing hanging over everybody's head, right? So that's, I think it's important that-
I agree.
Parents understand that. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
My concern is if the superintendent doesn't come back and Ozzy, does that mean Ozzy has to make the decision? Or will you guys? Like, will she have the information to present to you guys? If it hasn't already been presented?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna, so if, did John go, what I just heard John say is, a decision needs to be made. A decision needs to be made if we are going to exit by the end of the calendar year. So regardless, we're going to have to put a mechanism in place between now and the end of the year to make a decision. Does that make sense? It has to be. I can't-
Oh, yeah. I'm just, I'm just saying that as of right now-
And it would be a decision that would be-
Nobody has information about it.
Exactly, but-
No, you're gonna get it at the next meeting. Or before the next meeting, to hurry up and make this decision with one meeting. That means every parent of a special ed child needs to show up to find out how this is going to affect them because it's affecting the business end. And what are we gonna do about all the kids with OTs and PTs? I know Foster was talking about that they're contracted out through other people. Has anybody done any of this research, knowing that they were going into that meeting last month about it? On your end, like, you guys put it in the agenda. Did anybody start doing their own research to figure out what was happening?
The school committee, is this working? The school committee, well, I know I've not done research, but I know research is being done. I'm relying on other experts to give me that information. This is not my wheelhouse. So I'm relying on other experts.
I know. I'm just a little concerned that you guys are gonna have one meeting to make a decision. And it's a big decision that affects, I'm not sure how many kids with 504s and IEPs that affects, but I know my son is affected.
Keep in mind, Matt, that the meeting will be at the beginning in December. We have to December 31st, so we can have special meetings afterwards if need be.
Well, I just know some of you guys are all busy with that. Is that able to be blocked out, being as effective? I know the last time we had to find out about a special meeting, it was hard for you guys all to get together. And it's going to be like right around Christmas and holidays and vacations is what I'm worried about. It's cutting it close to make sure all the parents have the information.
I think on the flip side of this, if I may say this, if for some reason we weren't able to come to that decision by the end of the, yes, we can make it happen, but correct me if I'm wrong, if we do not submit something by the end of the year, it remains in full effect for the entire following school year.
Nothing changes.
We all, put it this way, we only have until the December, the end of December if we're going to get out. If we do nothing, we remain as part of it. But I think like, the assistant superintendent said, is that just now with one community leaving, there's gonna be a fiscal impact. So we need to, and again, that just happened, right? So, and I get it. Believe me, I get it. I think the good piece of this is, is that this has nothing to do with the school year, right? Nothing's changing. Correct me, everything stays the same. And then whatever is decided, if we ought to leave, we would make that decision. If we need to meet more than once, we'll absolutely meet more than once. I mean, we have to, if that's, and then we would have from the end of December through the beginning of the, well, till July 1st, but it wouldn't impact the students until July 1st.
Yes, but that means if you do exit out, you also have to have an extra strategy for ESY and all the services that happen right after 4th of July.
Correct.
So I just want everybody to realize this is all coming down real quick. And there should be a backup plan if you guys do decide to exit, to have all your eggs in one basket.
I agree.
Ducks in a row, eggs in a basket. Because if somebody drops the basket, you know I'm gonna show up to every meeting and hound you about it because my son does get services over the summer. Thank you.
Hey, guys. Take lovely little 18 Pleasant Lane. I just wanted to speak to the fact and just voice a concern over, clearly Stephanie has stepped down as our finance director. And on the agenda, it says to discuss a finance consultant. And I would just like to be very vocal about not agreeing with a consultant that is not an in-person, full-time person. The fact that- The fact that our school department has been running such a fiscally sound budget compared to other towns. The, the quick change in everything that's been happening is just very alarming and.
If, can I speak to that? That consultant is just in temporary until the position is filled full-time.
So has the position been posted? Okay, good. So I just, I wanted to make that very clear.
I agree with you.
What Stephanie has done for us getting all, all of those grants and like all of the things that she did outside of finance and how financially sound we are running, like.
We need a full-time person.
I've had you a few times at budget stuff, but thank you for filling these shoes. I just wanted to put it out there, you know, that we're, we're really lucky at the financial situation we are in. And it concerns me greatly because Stephanie was a finance dynamo, like she was incredible at what she did. And, um, you know, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't looking at like a part-time, not in-person.
We are not.
Okay.
Kid, I think the other, I 1,000% agree with you, and I think we all do as far as, no, we can't, we need a full-time person. Um, the level of expertise that, that Stephanie brought to this. Um, and what not everybody knows is Stephanie walked into, um, we changed MIS system, like she did a ton of work to bring us to where we are right now. So, um, we are in a far better place for having been blessed to have her with us for the time that we did. But yes, and I don't know that everyone truly understands the responsibilities of a finance director for a school department, very different.
Even above and beyond finance, what she did on a day to day basis.
Even on a finance level as far as, you know, you co, it's just very, very different. It's, it's on the municipal side, on the town, I mean, on the school side. Um, and Stephanie was really able to get us to a place where, and you're absolutely right, looking at all these nuggets, as she called them, she'd put them in there and to have us as close to budget.
The grant she got us is, and it's just, it's concerning. Like, it's a lot of shoes that need to be filled and.
Agreed.
I don't want to end up, you know, like a lot of towns in Rhode Island right now. Um, so, okay.
Thank you.
Richard Finnegan Ridge Road. Last meeting, Madam Chair, you said you're gonna let us know why it had to be, that meeting had to be so early in the morning, so. After consulting with whoever you had to consult with, can you let the public know why it had to be so early in the morning?
It wasn't a desired time. Did, um, did you want to say something, John? It wasn't a, um, our first choice to have a meeting at eight o'clock in the morning. But if anyone was here watching us trying to come up with a date to meet, you could see that we were struggling and we collectively, and anyone can correct me to my right or left, decided that it was most important to meet as soon as possible. Um, since the meeting was going to be an executive session meeting, that we needed to meet as soon as possible to find out who was going to be our, um, covering for the superintendent until she comes back. And we wanted to do it as urgently as possible. And even at that time, it was taking us a while. Of course, we had the 48-hour window that we had to wait. We couldn't do it the next day or the day after. So we, and then we had people that were leaving. You can see that, um, member Medbury is not here for a business requirement. He was leaving right after that meeting. He was gonna be gone for a few days, so we had to get it, had to get it done when we could, working around people's work schedules. Wasn't, it wasn't our first choice, but it was what we felt was necessary. Does anyone else want to add to that or, or anything different?
I think, um, it was based on our schedules really, because we all worked and we met before we worked, most of us.
We actually attempted to have a meeting, I think between eight and nine P M.
Yeah.
And it just wasn't feasible. One of our members were not available even that late.
The morning was the best.
This, which already of us all work and we all went in to work late instead.
I'm getting old. So when was that meeting? Was it a week ago, two weeks ago?
It was the 10th? Fifteenth?
So the public and myself had to wait a half a month just to get the answer that it was the most convenient time that we could meet. You couldn't explain it at that meeting?
I believe I did say it at the meeting and it's in the minutes.
In the minutes, she actually did say that, that it was the convenient time of when all the members could get together.
Okay, very good.
Okay, I did take the notes that day, so I know it was in there.
All right, thank you. I stand corrected. Tonight, I was home watching this meeting and I had to come down. The, the school committee added something to the agenda and then voted on it. Is that permissible under the Open Meetings Act? School committees adding something to the agenda?
What did we add that, that we voted on, Richard?
During the consent agenda.
Say that again?
Um, my understanding was that, um, we did not add to the agenda. They asked for an update to the minutes. So we amended the, we took the 15th meeting out and then Erica had requested specifically that we add a certain line that was stated at the main, at the meeting and not reflected in the minutes. And that's what we voted on. So it wasn't changing an agenda item. It was her request to add something to the established minutes. Makes sense?
Sure. I, I wish it was made more clear at the time. That's why I came down. Also tonight, on the agenda, there's an item, an executive session, potential litigation. Assumed to round general was 42, 46, 5A22. Can the committee assure me that whatever was spoken on this item, the public has no idea about? It doesn't have to do with the superintendent, doesn't have to do with the finance director. Because we all know what's going on with those two individuals. So can the committee assure me that it has nothing to do with the superintendent or finance director?
Mr. Anderson, could you give us some guidance on this?
The Attorney General has been very clear that a school committee, a town council, a zoning board, a board of canvases can meet an executive session to discuss potential litigation and not go into the details of what the potential litigation is because potential litigation sometimes never goes forward. So the way that it was posted in the meeting is perfectly appropriate.
That was not my question. My question is, can this committee assure me has nothing to do with the superintendent, because we all know, it's all public, what's going on with the superintendent? And it's public what's going on with the finance director. So can this committee assure me that that subject with those two individuals did not come up in this meeting tonight under that heading?
I'd advise the school committee not to answer the question. The whole idea of executive session is so that you can discuss something. And again, as I indicated, sometimes things resolve themselves.
So I'm putting the committee on notice. I will be filing complaint with the Attorney General's Office on this. They will look into the matter and they'll see if it has anything to do with the superintendent or the finance director, because it's evident that we know, already know what's going on with them. So if you discuss those two individuals, I would ask you, please come clean and let us know. Thank you.
I'll simply say what I've said to Mr. Finnegan before, bring it on.
Is there anyone else here that would like to come up? If not, I do have somebody, Mr. Finnegan, I'm sorry, I've, I've already had you up one. I'm sorry, Mr. Finnegan. I've already had you up once, Mr. Finnegan.
Attacked me in public.
Please.
Have a right to respond.
I, I, I want you to sit down, please. I've already asked you to come up once. If you have an issue with Mr. Finnegan, you, please.
No, I don't have it.
I'm sorry.
I do not have an issue myself.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I misspoke. Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, I missed.
And I'm glad that we have, I'd like the public to know.
Mr. Finnegan, you're disrupting the meeting. You're disrupting the meeting. I'm gonna ask you, please.
And two other officers.
Please in the back, because you know, this is getting out of control. Thank you. After all that excitement, we have somebody, um, at home that would like to speak. Alexis Wilson, uh, I see your name. Please give us your address.
It's 888 Topmistle Road. Um, I'm just inquiring for the second meeting in a row. What are the funds that we procured by raising the preschool, um, fee over a thousand percent over the summer? What is that being put towards in the preschool program?
You did ask that last week.
We don't have a finance director. I'm sure it's really hard to allocate where those funds are headed.
Yes, you did ask that at the last meeting and, um, I did not get back to you on that and, um, but we have someone that has the answer.
Great.
Yeah, right. So.
I don't know if I have the answer. Lori Booty at Principal of Clayville. Um, I just wanted to let you know that I, I did speak to Stephanie before she left about where the money was that went into that. We did hire a new teacher in that classroom who did some rearranging, all still in complete, uh, compliance with Bright Stars. And so there were a few purchases made. Stephanie assured me where the money was in my pre-K UCOA line and that that's where the money would be. I, so I did purchase some classroom materials for peers as well as, um, students with needs and I also just purchased, um, some brand new pre-K testing materials for that classroom as well. And she has, she has some other, the classroom team, I will say, the teacher and, um, the occupational therapist, the speech pathologist that works in there have some things in place that they would like to do and we've assured them that those funds are available for them.
Wonderful.
Just for clarification, I don't know if anyone can speak to this. I remember in, in the percentage that you raised, it was a significant percentage increase. However, the fees are, this isn't financing a classroom by any means. Do you remember offhand, Ozzy, what it? Ms. Wilson, do you remember offhand the change from, um, what it was to what?
It was $75 a year to up to $150 a month.
Okay. So again, while I, we certainly respect that that is a considerable change from what it was. Um, $150 a month. For, and this is only for role model children.
Correct.
And how many role model children in the program? Again, but it's not.
I want to say, um, I actually, we actually just, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to say, we just met today and I want to say that there's maybe three and the rest of the students in the program are IEP students. Um, all students with any IEP speech. It used to be that students with just a speech IEP could be role model students. And that changed at the beginning of this year. So any student with any IEP is.
And there's no charge for any of them.
No charge for any of those students. So I want to say at this point that maybe just mourning, but I'd have to, I want to say a three. Um, so, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Bootyette. And I'm just asking because it does seem like this town has an issue with missing and putting funds where they're not supposed to be. So thank you for answering that question for me.
Seeing no other hands, we can move on to the assistant superintendent's report.
I'm not used to reading this long, so I apologize in advance for my monotonous. So over the past several weeks, our schools have continued to demonstrate meaningful learning, thoughtful planning and strong collaboration across teachers, departments and buildings. I'm grateful for the dedication of educators, staff, students and families and their shared commitment to maintaining Situate as a community rooted in academic excellence, student well-being and collective pride. I want to recognize a few of our, um, staff members as you have talked about this. Um, Ms. Stephanie O'Leary has concluded her service to Situate to pursue a new professional opportunity. Her leadership significantly strengthened our financial systems, organizational processes and accountability structures. We thank Ms. O'Leary for her service professionalism and dedication to the Situate School Department and wish her continued success. And I agree, her shoes are very, very hard to fill. We, I wanted to recognize and extend sincere appreciation to Mr. Jay Geiger and Mr. Etui, who retired after many years of loyal service to our school. There, they were our maintenance technicians. Their exceptional support, responsiveness and commitment to maintaining a safe and welcoming school will be missed. We thank them for dedication, for their dedication and wish them well in their retirement. I also wanted to acknowledge our, can I go off script a little bit? Okay, I, I really, really want to appreciate our principals. They are mostly here and, uh, I think Mike is on Zoom. We had National Principal Month, um, and these days, I have to tell you, they have been amazing leaders that can, that continue to serve the, with dedication, problem solve, and they care deeply for student and staff. I'm grateful for their commitment to fostering, uh, strong school culture and academic excellence and for their camaraderie towards me. Without them, this job would not be possible. So thank you all. Um, for employee updates, we have started and I think, there was a question about whether we had posted for the Director of Finance and Administration. We did post for it and we will conduct a thorough and thoughtful selection process. Definitely, I didn't want to make big decisions without Superintendent Andrews here. And additionally, as, uh, Ms. Pendergast had mentioned, we were in a very bad situation. We definitely want to be very thoughtful and who we are selecting for a long term. In the interim, I'm hoping that I get the blessing tonight to hire a consultant on a per diem basis to support some short-term financial functions, including some reporting to RIDE, uh, some assistance in budgeting for the principals and, uh, our school leaders and some operational oversight. And finally, our, um, negotiations, we need some financial, uh, impact statements and, uh, reports that hopefully that they have promised they will help with. We did do a second round interview, uh, for our maintenance technicians, uh, yes?
Yesterday.
Yesterday. Uh, hopefully we're gonna have a full facilities team by the end of the week because right now we have an interim facilities director and no, uh, maintenance technicians. So we did do our reference checks. We are ready to go and give them a contract. They have agreed to take the positions. We just have to give them a contract.
Might be a little bit late for this question, but, um, I remember, so historically, we had a facilities director and then we had an assistant facilities director. Ed Tui was hired probably about nine or 10 years ago. And the reason he was hired was specifically because he was a plumber. Are we replacing somebody with a plumber?
So I can tell you that we definitely did not want to have anybody use their credentials or certificates because of liability purposes, but they have experience in plumbing. One of them has experienced plumbing, HVAC and.
And, and that, electrician, yes. That was the big, and that's how we were able to actually add a position to. I mean, I know it's like a decade ago now, but it was because of the cost savings associated with us having to not contract out so much. So, uh, one of the candidates at least.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, they have, I think we hit a jackpot really because it was so hard when you put that note, yeah.
My gosh, we hired Ed specifically because of that experience.
Is his name Ed Tui?
No.
Yeah. Oh my God, maybe they, they have the same name. I think we haven't officially offered them a contract yet. Um, I also wanted to say that we had done, we did the second round interviews for Director of Facilities. Um, Mr. DeLuca Leo and I sat and did the second round. I am, I have informed both candidates that the final appointment will be made upon a superintendent's, um, return. Okay, this is my part, much more comfortable talking about curriculum. So last year as a part of a five-year, uh, curriculum review cycle, math and ELA were up. We followed a comprehensive review process to look at different, um, curriculum areas. We developed and used a curriculum selection rubric. We also, um, reviewed multiple materials. We looked at other districts that were high performing or showing high growth to see what they were using. Then we selected some schools, uh, that were implementing, implementing those materials. We went there, we visited the implementation, but also interviewed their teachers, their teachers. And then, uh, the teachers and administrators as a whole group collaborated, scored and selected. Um, I can tell you then in. Um, I can tell you that in all of these, other than the high school Odell, which is very slightly above what the price was. All of the costs are actually less with our new selections with higher results as it has been shown on the uh right website. Um, I the elementary school decided and chose to continue with American Reading Company after visiting two different schools. They decided that the shortcomings of all those programs were the same as American Reading Company. Middle school adopted into literature. High school's uh curriculum was no longer being published or you were not. We had to go to another curriculum. So they went with Odell. Elementary used to have Eureka. Eureka Math Squared was adopted, which is very similar to what they have, but it has been enhanced and the. Assessments are more accessible to kids. Uh, middle school is continuing and high school has decided to go with reveal math. They used to have Agile Minds, but we noticed that only two or three districts in the state are using it or continuing the use of it. So they um did a lot of um research. So those adopt adoptions support rigor, alignment to standards and improved student outcome. Our shared goal is to continue strengthening student learning through consistency, high quality materials and ongoing professional learning. In terms of grants, uh, we were awarded thirty thousand dollars for a McKinny Vento to gra- uh to support our students experiencing homelessness. The funding will be used to expand identification, reporting, tutoring and whatever services we can provide to our students who are struggling. Um, we were also approved for an additional twenty thousand dollars through Learn Three Sixty Five Initiative. This will bring us to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars across the four rounds. Uh, we these funds have really supported our after school. And summer learning opportunities, um, including academics, robotics, STEM, yoga, project based learning, wellness, financial literacy. And many, many more through partnerships with Hope Library and One Strategy. Uh, I had a meeting with them today and we are on our way to submission of the twenty thousand dollars by November seventh. The facilities um in terms of the interim director, he uh Mr. De Russo. No, Barry D. Mr. De Russo, I've been practicing his last name because it's like seventeen thousand letters. I I I'm the same way. Um, so he completed a thirty day assessment of all schools. He identified long and short term needs. Uh, he we collaborated and reviewed all of them. We prioritized and we brought it to the building committee. Uh, a few of those moves are going to be presented tonight, uh, but I wanted to just say thank you for his immediate action, uh, steps and action taking. Thank you very much. Um, for a family partnership, we met with the I'm I sat in the pact meeting on October thirtieth. There were four members of the pact meeting there. They shared questions and made some recommendations. There was unanimous interest in having the rotating school committee members uh represented at the future meetings to strengthen. Communication and collaborative collaborative problem solving. Um, and I really wanted to say that I appreciated their continued engagement and partnership. These recent weeks have reflected continuum, continued momentum, collaboration and progress across instructional planning, facilities and student support system. I extend a heartfelt appreciation to our educators, staff, families and school committee for your partnership and commitment to students and Situate. I look forward to our continued progress as we move into November.
Thank you. Does anyone on the school committee have a question for Ozzy?
There you go. Um, do you have a date for the next meeting for the pack meeting and for November? Because I know we have Thursday, the.
I know.
Thanksgiving, so.
Yes, so we said a Thursday before or after, but because it's supposed to be concurred with the building committee, we forgot to actually ask them. So that's on my list to do tomorrow. Yes. It's going to be a Thursday before or Thursday after.
I'll go to the next one. I'll.
Thank you. That's awesome. Thank you very much.
See, when does when do they meet?
Oh, somebody changed this. Oh.
What time do they meet? I should ask.
The meeting is at five to six. Sorry, five thirty to six.
Oh.
Six thirty. I was there till to nine fifteen.
Send send us a notice.
I definitely will. Yes. Thank you for volunteering, Miss.
Ouchie.
Uh, that brings us to new business. Uh, the first item is the Situate High School chorus trip to New York City. I assume um.
Michael Grace. Yeah.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Grace. Is this is this an annual um trip?
No, this this is a trip that would be the first of its kind for the chorus department. It's an opportunity for the students to work with a guest conductor at Carnegie Hall. So I would work with them on the music ahead of time and we would have rehearsals every evening while in New York City and the kids have an opportunity to sing with other kids from other schools. Um, and work with a guest conductor to perform the concert at Carnegie Hall on the final day.
Is this a one day trip?
Uh, this is a four day trip um beginning on a Saturday. So it's a Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
And uh, one of the concerns that we always have on the school committee, as I'm sure the rest of the community at large does. We want to make sure that every student is able to go regardless of finances. Um, have you found that to be the case?
So I have been looking into a lot of grants that are available. We also have the Situate Music Association that does fundraising for our department. So I'm in agreement with you about every student being able to go regardless of financial status. And so that's a priority to make sure that every student is able to attend if they want to.
And um normally we have the request form in our packet so we can. Oh. Hmm. Did you see it?
Yeah.
Uh. That's that's my fault. Yep. It is in the packet. So that's my fault.
That's okay.
That's why I'm asking all these questions. I'm looking at it now.
Sheesh.
Yeah, um. Thank you. Thank you. It was in my packet the whole time. I don't know why I missed it. But we've always approved these trips and I don't know if any uh school can remember other school community members have any questions or concerns to ask.
I think it's a great opportunity. I don't think I don't think I've seen us do something like this before. I think it's wonderful.
Yeah, me too. Not to mention, I love New York City.
Thank you. I'll put you down on the willing to chaperone list.
Yeah, um.
I'll go.
Do I have a motion to approve the um high school chorus trip to New York City?
A motion to approve the um Situate High School chorus trip to New York City.
Um, I second. Since since Colleen just came, you you can have an opportunity to ask a question if you want.
I'm good. Thank you. I didn't see it.
Okay, um, if there's no um questions, all in favor, aye. That passes and certainly have come back and tell us what a great time you had.
Yay, thank you so much. Thank you.
You can come back and sing to us at a meeting.
I can do that. We will do that. We will do.
All right, good. Thank you.
The next on the item is uh the postponing of the relocation of central office.
When Barry did his thirty day assessment, this was one of the biggest things that he had brought up. So I'm going to have Barry, if you don't mind speaking to this, please.
Oh, I'll just stand up. Everybody. Um, so I've been here for a short period of time. One of the things that landed on my plate was the move to the town hall. Uh, I went over there with Mark and kind of did a quick walkthrough and I was trying to understand. When are we supposed to move in to this area? And I don't know reason for moving or not moving. I just wanted to kind of look at. Costs and time and and things of that nature. Um, we then had talked to Lori about. You know, the needs over at Clayville. So we kind of have the pros and cons. I think you guys kind of have it in your sheet. If you want me to go through it, I can. My concern was um space. We're we're losing nine hundred square feet by moving to that area. I had had a discussion with the fire marshal as to we may need a fire separation door. But I couldn't get a real answer as to yes, we do. No, we don't. Where it would go. I was looking at E D A complacency. I'd been told that the lower level office could have been a conference room, but it may not be a conference room, but we could use the other room. If we had a meeting, no one could really give me any definitive um answers and there wasn't really one, anyone here at the time. Uh, to answer a lot of those questions. Uh, so just looking at what I was, you know, handed at that point with narrow staircases and. You know, no insulation in the attic, floors are need to be replaced, walls need to be patched and painted. Trim on the uh windows, shades, lights. Uh, there's a lot. And then when I started looking at some of the quotes we had. There were some big expensive items and I just, you know, I didn't know is that. From my aspect, is that coming out of a facilities budget? Is that coming out of the town budget? Is there a combination of the two? Um, so again, I went through the the pros and cons. You guys all have them. I I myself, I just like to see. A little time so we can look at other uh options. I know the building committee kind of had felt that same way. That maybe we can find something else to do.
No, I I find your report very enlightening. I and I'll be honest, I don't know where I I I can't remember where this all came from. So I don't know that it ever initiated on the school committee side of things. So years ago, obviously, probably told you the the school, the offices were upstairs there many, many moons ago. Um, and they were moved to Clayville. They did do a multitude of renovations over there and spent a lot of money, but. It doesn't sound like that space upstairs is any better than maybe. I'm sure there's no mold in it anymore or whatever they removed from, but I do not. Can anyone? Why did we start looking into this in the first place?
So I'm just curious. Is it in the same space that it was before?
Yeah.
And so it was that small. So is are people who are moving there more people now that would potentially go versus what was there before?
I I think it's important to have a discussion and not to. I mean, this is very enlightening, but why are we like? First of all, there was supposed to be no costs involved whatsoever. Back in the day, we used to pay the town like five thousand dollars a year to rent it, this and that. There was a whole conversation about they want us to move. I think this initiated on the town side of thing because I don't know that we ever had.
I think there was.
And I don't know why. We have more space where we are now there.
I thought it I thought it was initiated on the the central office side, so I don't really. I guess we don't know.
No.
But regardless.
Right.
Regardless.
And not to cut.
My biggest concern is what are the? And and I I think we need more time to get these answers. Maybe not. Um, I I know there's pros and cons and needs of of Clayville. I really um.
That's why.
I had asked Ozzy to look at the um the the future cast, if you will, of student enrollment. And while it doesn't break it down by school. Um, I I wish we could break it down by school. Um, the student enrollment is is really not projected to change much, but that doesn't help us. If it's going to only stay stagnant because we have a a drop in one school and a big boom in another. Um, it's my understanding, but I could be wrong, that Clayville is a one area in town that is not that has more room for growth and development. So that's a concern.
However, Clayville also operated and not that it was they operated with two of every class for years. And we don't want to go back that way, but we've lost one of every grade. I don't know that there are. It's not like we're like, oh, my God, they're busting at the seams at Clayville that we need to facilitate something. And again.
I don't.
Why would we spend money that we don't need to?
Like I. Or without looking into it more, if that's what's being. So long as.
Yeah.
But you know, we've we've got our principal here. I I want to make sure that um. We really thoroughly look into the needs of Clayville, the future needs of Clayville. And Colleen, when we had two of each grade. By not having two each grade, now we have an art room.
I I I a thousand percent understand like my kids were the classes that came through like and I get it and I'm not, I promise. I'm not looking to do art in a cardigan. Do you know what I mean? But we've removed six classrooms. Uh, do you know what I mean? Like so.
We also lost the cafeteria in the basement.
That's been gone for.
Correct.
Yeah.
That was my time of my son.
Kindergarten.
If you stay along. And I think is it fair to say as a committee, though, I think especially being here on an interim basis that. We shouldn't be utilizing your time or efforts to look at this. We have enough other things going on in the district right now. That my thoughts exactly that in a lot of other projects that could be funded, that this there is no urgency to this whatsoever. And if we do do it in the future, I think we this is will you certainly utilize this information that you provided us.
Is is that the does anyone? I mean, I I agree with you. Does anyone else have an opinion that they want to share? No.
No, actually, we. Okay, so we had talked about um partitioning off some of the office space that's currently at Clayville. Uh, so Ozzy has her in private areas. She can have meetings, things of that nature. Uh, I think the costs are in there. They're relatively low. Uh, to split, you know, to split that office up, uh, and also looking at maybe other options within Clayville.
Again, I think those are things and that we should be talking about in our next budget cycle. Like we should put them in whatever we need to do. If that's a need, I don't think there's any urgency for anything to be done at Clayville. Right now.
Unless it's in unless it's in a budget, I wouldn't know.
I we've never because they were talking about moving. So there's nothing allocated. I think that if these are projected needs that we could certainly do it, but. I don't care if it's at like ten thousand dollars is still a lot of money. Do you know what I mean? Like when we have other things? No offense, but a private office isn't the top on the needs when we're talking about warm, safe and dry type of stuff, right?
Guys make the call.
I know. Thank you.
It's not me. Are there any other questions?
None at this time, so I. We didn't take a formal vote because we don't need to take a formal vote. It's just a discussion. But to definitely look into the the cost of doing the adding um extra office space. Um, for going forward and where that would come in the budget, once we get a budget organized. Um, next is recommendation to postpone projects that have been um that have not been awarded. Or allocated um to replace the Hope Elementary roof. Anyone that would like to speak to that?
I forgot to text um Mr. Robinson to even add in. I do have what he has told me to tell everyone. Um, so during the October rainstorms, the conditions of the uh condition of the roof at the elementary, uh, Hope Elementary was identified as being in much worse shape than originally anticipated. Upon review of the condition, it was determined that the roof replacement project needs to be done immediately and cannot wait. The scope of work that is needed at Hope is much larger than now than it was when the capital plan was originally put together two or three years ago. Due to the increase in the project's scope and anticipated budget. We have recommend, uh, we have recommended that all school projects that are not currently under contract be postponed until the roof repairs at Hope are complete. This include hope boiler replacement, relocation of middle school entrance and middle school learning commons. These projects will remain on the capital plan and will be reassessed in schedule. In the schedule, once more information on time and the budget for Hope roof has been finalized. So Kocho is working on the design of the roof as well as write approvals and anticipates that more accurate numbers will be available in the next two months or so. With the project being ready to bid in December or early January. And for your viewing, these are pictures that were provided by Barry and um Kyle.
And Kyle is here.
You are here. Sorry. Thank you.
I am here.
If you wanted to add anything, Kyle.
Great job, Ozzy. But um what we found up there was the original scope, which was going to be a partial roof replacement. Will not cover the issues that we found. And they're they're more extensive than just with the roof. As you can see in some of these pictures, there's work that has to be done with the walls. Just doing the the roof will not prevent uh all the water infiltration and. The amount of damage that we found in different areas, it makes sense to. To focus on this um before uh we get to a point where. You know, we start having major and significant issues in inside the school. So putting up postponing all the other projects right now until we have a better understanding of this uh scope and the the cost of this.
So Kyle.
Is the best direction.
I I need to ask and maybe Barry, maybe you can answer, maybe somebody can. So this isn't the first time something that's why why didn't we see this before? It's rained before. It's not like this is not the first time that we put this big bonded budget uh budget together to say we need to do X. And I'm not, I'm not saying we don't need to do it. Please don't think it that way, but like, how did we not discover? to say we need to do X. And I'm not, I'm not saying we don't need to do it. Please don't think it that way. But like, how did we not discover that before?
So this.
But but the bandages have been there for years. That's my problem. So why are we piecemealing stuff when we're and I?
I I look at it as I was, I was only here a couple of days, I think, when I got a call saying, hey, there's water pouring into the school. I immediately just get the roofing guys over there like you can't educate if kids get.
No, and I and please don't think that I'm opposed to this project. I'm absolutely not.
So the roofers went over there and I got a call saying there's nothing to patch. We can't patch anything because there's nothing left to patch to. Which then we got Kyle involved and got everybody up on the roof and they're literally using tape.
But let me, let me ask this question. And I'm not a facilities person. A roof doesn't go to having nothing to tape overnight. Do you know what I mean? Like that?
Probably, you know, ten, ten, ten years worth of and it's not just the roof. And that's the thing is it's, there's other parts that water is penetrating in, which is going to get under the roof and undermine the roof. So you know, it's just a a period of time of you know, neglect and unfortunately, that's.
This was on the schedule for the for the next, for the next round. And I, it just happened faster. Is that right, Kyle? This wasn't this scheduled?
So this, this was a project that was scheduled. It's been identified. Um I think it what it appears is um, especially with some of the pictures with some of the trim and some of the work on the adjac- adjacent walls to that are exposed up there is I think um something failed and then opened up areas that allowed that to expand. You know, when that happened, I can't you know, tell you, I don't know if it happened the summer. I don't know if it happened two years ago, but um the the more we looked at it. So what we would have found if this was on a schedule, if you know, if the storm hadn't happened, when we got up there, we would have found that the scope had expanded since it was originally done three or four years ago. Um, when we was put on that plan. And so that we would have found at any point in time, what triggered this was the amount of water that was getting in during one of the storms um kind of forced us up there.
So I guess, I guess the the question would be to both you, Kyle, and you, Barry, too. So as far as like a warm, safe and dry, this has to take priority or everything else. Is that like, it's like, there's not a doubt in anybody's mind that, not that I don't want to do the other project. This is it. It's here.
So now.
Okay, got it. That's enough.
Always.
Yeah.
Kyle's kind of the same.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
What, what is the fees?
But that's, that I I'm not gonna, we we only, we can only deal with what we have now, but that's what's frustrating to me. And I get we don't have the monies to fund everything at certain times, but yeah, okay.
What is the feasibility, though? You're talking about uh December and January doing a roof at this, that point. Uh, we know weather is coming. Um, but also the types of material you're trying to use and certain temperatures.
So it can.
Has that been projected out?
Yeah, it can be. So it can be done in the winter. I mean, if it's zero degrees, you know, there there are temperature limitations, but it doesn't, doesn't have to be 80 degrees to do the work. It would probably realistically not start until earliest in February, more likely March. So if this goes out in January, we get numbers in January, it's going to take a little time, get contracts, get materials. So I think more real realistically, this is going to happen in March. Ideally, it will happen. Um, you know, if weather cooperates, it'll happen as soon as we can get out there, but most of the work will be done in the spring.
Okay. And I can't, I can't visualize what the roof looks like. I have all the pictures, but do we go up there and clean the roofs off at all? In the winter to get like if we had feet of snow, does somebody go up and?
So I've been, I've been told that it has happened in the past. And honestly, that is um unless you have to do that because you're afraid the building is going to collapse, that actually causes serious damage to roofs, these types of roofs. So um it, it shouldn't happen on a regular basis. Um, it shouldn't need to happen on a regular basis, but I have been told that it it has happened in the past.
Moment between, so say best case scenario, we do it in March. Do we have, are the kids going to be dry? Between now and then, like, I know you can't guarantee what's coming, but we can kind of Mickey Mouse or patch things together as best we can to um, was the water coming in? Was it impacting any classroom areas? Okay. So obviously something we need to be very cognizant of and right, like, um, okay.
There, there were patches, there were some things done. Um, what the the roofer really, what they mean by that is they don't, they won't guarantee any of these patches. There's, there's a lot of tape up there. There's a lot of things that are very temporary to try to prevent that and you know, obviously, this takes time to get it through Ride, get it designed, get a bid. And in that time, we may have to, somebody may have to go up there again and and do temporary um fixes. But uh
To expedite, expedite this as fast as possible.
Yeah, yeah, we've got it. We've got it. We're moving and we're trying to, we're trying to make it happen as fast as we can. Um, so that we can eliminate those things. Um but I think realistically, it'll be late winter if we have a nice winter to um, you know, as soon as spring comes where they can really attack this. There is some, some of this work can be done without major disruption during the winter. Um, based on what has to be fixed. Um and then just so everyone's uh aware that when we did a cut of the roof to understand what was up there and there is an original roof underneath the existing roof.
Of course, there is.
Which, which the way it's constructed um is not, it's, it actually, it can't be separated from the roofing system. Um, so that will always be in place. We are also hoping that a lot of the existing insulation can remain. So that will help prevent any or it'll limit the interruption while this work is going on to the students below.
And it's um in the the meeting that we had by postponing or um the other projects, the um Hope, the 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 furnace and all in the the North Situate, we want to keep or have access to as much money as possible in case we run into unforeseen things and we want to make sure we have enough bond money for this. And that's why these other projects are now being asked to be postponed. So just to make that clear. I do have a hand up from Bobby Coletta, I see.
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yes, just give us your address, Bobby.
Yes, Bobby Coletta and I, Brett Drive. I'm just curious if the committee is looking at holding a meeting at Hope. Do you guys can put your eyes on all of this stuff?
You know, you know, I won't go on the roof, but yes.
On the roof.
Yeah, I don't want you on the roof either. I just mean like.
Now teasing you, I'm teasing you. Actually, um Bobby, I was speaking with Ozzy about um just starting the rotation of these meetings and we were going to start this month, but then Ozzy explained to me that the star ratings will be in by next month. And she thought, what, why don't we wait till we have as much information to share as as possible? So we will start rotation um in December and where, well, whatever principal wants to start doing that first. Oh, well, I guess they're ahead of me. So we will be in Hope in February. And um I would like to uh have a tour. Um, as you would say, more of a, like an inspection tour as opposed to not just looking at the great stuff, but the ugly stuff, too.
We want to see the good stuff, too, but honestly, that's.
So yes, we will do that.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to see, you know, if we're, that we have barrels of water in the middle of classrooms that have a lot of kids in them, right? I mean, all of those things. So I I want you guys to see it, not to, not to look at the teachers and what they're doing for curriculum, but more like the actual physicalness of the conditions of the building that we're in. So thank you, guys.
Agreed. If there's no more questions, I'd like to um have a, do I have a motion to recommend that to postpone the projects that have not been awarded and allocated? John has to say.
Resolution that was prepared by Bond Council. Um, that was uh distributed, I believe, either Friday or yesterday. Um, there is, I apologize for the delay, but there was a very lengthy meeting
Yeah.
on Thursday um with Bond Council. Um, with um uh uh physical plant, uh myself, the assistant superintendent to go over all of these issues. Bond Council has prepared a resolution for your approval. Um, because this is a bond funded project, has to be proved not just by the school committee, but also by Ride and the town council.
Yep.
So this is putting the school committee on record that you want to make these changes. And then this is the document that will be shown to the town council and to Ride, asking them to approve the changes. So I would ask your approval.
So instead of the motion, I was just making is the motion to approve the resolution?
Yes, please.
Does, did everybody? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the resolution of adding Hope roof projects to the school capital projects to be paid from the three million five hundred of the bonds and requesting right approval of memorandum of agreement to grant Hope roof project reimbursement?
Should, I I don't know if somewhere in the motion, it should say that we're doing it with the implication that we're postponing other projects. We're not. Okay, I.
That we're postponed specifically.
Oh, so that would be the second mo, that separate?
No, it's not a separate motion. It's all one package.
It's one package.
I get that, but I'm saying we're just making a motion to to do this, but we're making the motion based upon the fact that we're we're proving this based upon the fact that we are going to extend out other, we're not looking for another amount of money.
That is correct. And that is correct.
So the motion, because it's all in the resolution, the motion covers all of that. I am looking for a so moved.
I'll still move it. So moved.
And a second. But any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, get that moving, Kyle, as fast as you can. Um, and then the next item is recommendation to postpone the 2024 bid awarded to Marin Construction. This is all part of this um piece. Um, Marin is a um, well, I probably shouldn't, well, I'll finish, then you can correct me. This is a company that was going to come in to do the foyer, the front of uh North City Elementary. And um instead of this, this project is part of the one that's being postponed, but um oh, we're not talking about the flooring. Is this?
Yeah, that's what this is.
Um, that we're in instead of, we're hoping to with the Marin Construction, if they can purchase the flooring now um and get that product purchased. So we don't have to pay more money when it's.
We have a good price range.
Yeah. And they're willing to honor that.
Right.
We would purchase it and then store it and have it ready to be installed. Because this is a a project that was also postponed. Another one of those, just in case we don't have enough money because we don't know what we're running into. But if we do have enough money left over from the roof, then this is going to be the first thing we will do.
Correct. And the reason for that is just the fact that this has already been bid. And at your number 15, you approved a contract.
Right.
The contract has not been signed yet. Because when all these problems at Hope happened, it was all of a sudden, Hope, you know, stopped the music. Um, on the other hand, we've been trying to come up with something that is fair and equitable. Um, working with Marin and something also that frankly protects the school department in terms of the pricing that they got, because nothing's going to come down for materials.
Do we have a place to store that amount of flooring?
And the answer, the answer to that is my understanding.
Knowing.
The maintenance building and back of the high school, there will be have to be some stuff that is cleaned out of that, but that's my understanding where the tentative um idea is to place that. We also um are going to need to get it insured so that if there was a fire or something that we are protected. So we're working, literally, this was the topic of the conversation on Thursday. We are working on those details. Um, but we're asking um for your approval to postpone this specific project because you already took the vote
To approve it.
Sign a contract.
So do I have a motion to recommend to postpone the 2024 bid awarded to Marin Construction for the North Situate updates?
So moved.
Any more questions or discussions? Because this is a lot for people to absorb. All in favor?
Aye.
And last is a finance consultant presentation?
So unfortunately, Andy Brown's team, T M S, was not able to be here. Um, but I did uh provide in your packets what they have in terms of financial services, finance, business, uh management and accountant services. They assured me that they have worked with different districts in Rhode Island before, so they know the right regulations and Excel grant. Um, they have worked with Tyler System, which is something that is very specific and they need to dive in from the get go. Um, I told you about the needs that we have immediately for them. I have tried my best to do what I can, but I really um I I need help and they are willing to start help as soon as possible between the two people that I um had approached or tried to get to start immediately. This is a cheaper price and we have had a really great relationship, working relationship with T M S already. So I'm hoping that I have your blessing to hire them ASAP on a per diem basis with no more, no longer than 30 days. And in the meantime, we'll do the interviews for finance director, but uh they have agreed to help us.
You stated earlier, this is just a temporary.
Very, very. Yeah, maximum of 30 days.
And John, we don't need to put anything out to bid, like, we're just.
It's less than 10,000.
Yes, we have to know for several reasons. You already have a contractual relationship with T M S, number one. Number two is, to be very blunt, you have an emergency.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, uh, you know, the school department can't operate without somebody handling the finances. And with all due respect to the assistant superintendent, to the director of physical plant, myself, to the members of the school committee. None of the people here are finance people. So there is something that has to be done. There are projects that the school committee discussed, there's a project, the school committee discussed in executive session um earlier tonight that we need numbers generated in terms of what it would cost. We can't, at the moment, we're at a standstill, so uh um I don't see an issue with approving this.
No, and I think on that same note, I think it's very important. I just want to take this opportunity to say, I said it earlier. Um, there are some people that have no understanding of, and not that any of you here should, you're educated, you're attorneys, you're this. But I've, you know, heard, oh, what do we need a finance director for for the school? I don't know, because we're three quarters of the town's budget. I don't know, because we're grant funded, like, there are so, there's such a level of expertise that is required to make a school district operate. Yes, the town holds the purse, but we're the ones that have to account for every single penny, where it goes, what it's for. And all along the way. So I can't, obviously, we need somebody.
I I I couldn't agree more with you.
Do I have a motion to approve the finance? Oh, did we approve this or is this something that we're just giving Ozzy the blessing for?
We're giving uh the assistant superintendent the opportunity, permission to go out and do this.
Do I have to vote for that?
Yeah, I need to, I I I think you do need a motion.
So the cost, I think we should discuss the cost involved. It's non-negotiable. That's what, yeah.
That's up to you, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, I think it's.
I am looking for a motion.
Yeah. Um, so it's, it was $500 a day up for the.
Yes. Yes, and if they go above the uh 30 days, it's going to be maxed at 10,000. They have agreed to it. I am going to talk to them tomorrow to, for a contract that I can share with the school committee and then you can.
Is there a time commit? So we could do it for up to 30 days. I'm not saying we might not have to go beyond, but it's not, we have to sign on for years worth of services or.
No, it could be two days even. Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah. I mean, we're not that lucky to play somebody that.
So um does someone make a motion to approve the hiring of uh T M S as a finance consultant um on a per diem basis?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for finding that. And do I have any announcements? I do have a question. How's Frankie?
He is now seven pounds. He is great, though. Uh, he's our new docson uh 13 weeks, going to be 14 weeks and.
I've seen pictures in your.
For Chris, uh for Christmas, for Halloween this year. So he's a true friend.
And is it short for Frank? And is it short for a Frankfurter? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.